We have three speakers that have signed up to speak tonight. We have Beaver Johnson, Elizabeth Wall, and Lynette Frazier. I hope everybody is here. Beaver Johnson, would you like to be our first speaker tonight? Three minutes, please, and when you start speaking, we'll start your timer.
It's with you. You're the mic.
Thank you, sir.
I guess that's better. Am I on? Okay.
Are you ready?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
I read in the paper recently an introduction to an ordinance involving scrap metal dealers, and I can assure you, we are not the bad guys. We are the good guys and are fully aware of the problems involving scrap metal theft in Jefferson County as well as in the state of Arkansas. I want to thank the city council and the mayor for letting me speak tonight. I know this is a problem, and I know that y'all want to address it, but I think you need to know that there are already laws on books governing this. In 2008, the city of Pine Bluff addressed this issue when scrap metal theft became a major problem. The General Assembly revisited in 2009. In 2011, I met with Representative Kim Hammer and Representative Jeremy Hutchison and recrafted the law regarding scrap metal theft. Before you now, you have what we are required to do on a daily basis, not on a monthly basis. And all of this information is accessible to our local law enforcement, county law enforcement, and state law enforcement on a daily basis by going to leads online. This is not something new. This is something we've been doing since 2003. We have recently spent about $15,000 upgrading and updating all of our hardware, our cameras, our readers, our thumbprint readers, and our scanners to comply with what the law says. And it's very explicit on how we have to report our purchases. Again, we are not the bad guys. We're on your side. We don't want to buy stolen material. It makes us look bad, and it's bad business, and we refuse to do that. Now, I want to make y'all aware of the laws that are in existence and how we do that. And we have an example before you now in the folder on everything that we do on a daily basis. Every afternoon at 4:00, when we close business, every bit of this information is uploaded, and the Pine Bluff Police Department can access this from the law enforcement side and can see what we did every day. I can't speak for other scrap metal yards. I can only speak for Johnson's Metal Recyclers. But we do this, and there are laws in existence. I don't think this needs to be expanded unless y'all can provide us funding with whatever you come up with that you would like for us to do additionally. I don't know what we could do additionally, frankly, because we get everything but their life history and their children. That was a joke. I wanted the city council to be aware that we know what's going on, and I wanted to show you how we go about what we do. On the back page of this, there's a testimonial from the Assistant Chief of Police from Whitehall. If you would like to read that, I won't bore you with reading it, but I have this information in front of you for you to peruse at your own leisure. Please consider this as you consider this new ordinance. I am a viable business in Jefferson County, and I've been in business this month 20 years. We provide jobs. We provide a very, very strong background for recycling. It saves energy. It's an honorable business to be in, and I don't want to be victimized and villainized like we're the bad guys.
Okay, right. Is it proper to ask a question at this particular?
Yes, ma'am.
How many dealers are there in Pine Bluff? Scrap metal dealers?
Scrap metal dealers that I know of in Pine Bluff. Mr. McGee is fixing to go out of business, but there's our scrapyard and light wrecking yard over on Sixth Street. There's one in the county.
So there's two in the city limits then of Pine Bluff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Where are you located?
2000 Sturgis Road. I'm actually in Dalloway. I would venture to say there's probably some people in here right now that have brought us aluminum cans on a regular basis.
We in the city?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Okay, the problem is not the aluminum cans. The problem is manhole covers.
We don't buy those.
Yeah.
It's against the law for us to buy those. We don't buy those.
That's what we know.
Yes, ma'am.
Against the law, but they are disappearing faster than the city can replace them. And also, when you have relatives, that their loans or their rental property is being stripped on a daily basis for corporate.
We're aware of that, and we get calls on that on a regular basis. In addition to what you see in front of you right now, we work very well with the prosecuting attorney and with the Pine Bluff Police Department. I am actually have been subpoenaed to go to court next month on a case on a stolen vehicle. We provide the police with every bit of this. They don't really have to do very much legwork because it's all in video and in print.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Yes, sir.
How do they sell that at your place?
How do they what now?
How do you buy it?
I buy it by the pound.
Right.
But they have to provide me with proof of ownership, and it's in there. You'll see it in that photo.
It's something about 10 years, too.
10 years?
On the vehicle.
Right. Any vehicle has to be old. Anything 10 years or newer is required to have a title. Anything 10 years or older, by state law, is not. But they still have to sign a bill of sale.
I understand, but let me just say this.
Okay.
A car was snatched from my property. It was over 10 years old.
Okay.
It was after my deceased brother, so he wasn't nobody there, and they just knew that, and they just snatched it.
Yes, sir.
Sold it to a dealer, not to you, but it was a dealer here. But I want to go back to what Alderman Walker said, is that those manhole toppings are coming up missing. The way I understand it is, and that's why I asked you, what, how did you buy it? They'll fill up a junk car, a junk trailer, and drive it up to you, and you just give them to them per pound. That's what I've seen.
I go through the scrap metal that comes into the scrapyard. No, sir, I will not buy that. There are certain things that we cannot buy according to state law. Any type of utility, wiring, has to be sold by a licensed contractor.
Can I just tell you this?
Yes, sir.
I did find that car at one of the local?
Yes, sir.
Junkyards, and it was just torn up. It was just full of junk. They had just, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
I could have gotten it back, but it would cost me more to get it back.
Right.
Because it was just full of junk. Seat was bad and everything.
Yes, sir.
It was a real bad time for me because I lost my brother. We couldn't attend to the car at that time.
Yes, sir.
But I did find it. It had just junk in it. They had just thrown in it, messed up the seats, and I'm not even sure that a manhole top wasn't in there, Ms. Walker. But everything was in there, and the car was paid for because of the weight.
I mean, you have to buy things in, you can't, we can't treat every person that comes from the scrapyard like they're a criminal. We have to take, we have to buy things in good faith. There are certain things that we can't buy that I can't vouch for other people. I can tell you at Johnson's Metal Recyclers, I won't buy manhole covers. It won't happen.
Well, I mean, if the car was stuffed with equipment, you can't go through there and figure it and find it out. That's all I'm saying, and that's the problem.
That should be a problem.
And everything in that car, when we found it.
It's not a problem at Johnson's Metal Recyclers because I don't buy them with the stuff in the car.
I did say it wasn't.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's your name again?
I'm Beaver Johnson.
Thank you for being in the fourth ward also, Dalloway. About the manhole covers, I mean, it is a problem.
Yes, sir.
Do you send those when they, do you record those when they come in, if they come in?
If I see a vehicle come in that has manhole covers on them, I can assure you, I'll call the Pine Bluff Police before they get off my scrapyard.
Another thing, can you work with our street department as well with that?
Sure.
You know, to kind of fit it in tight enough of what you're doing.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you being in the fourth ward also.
No problem. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, Elizabeth Wall?
Good evening, Mayor Debbie Hollingsworth, our council members, and everyone here. I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to let my voice be heard. The citizens of Pine Bluff elected all of you, it is my belief, to follow the current laws, not your own personal agendas. You cannot pick and choose which laws or ordinances you wish to follow. I'm specifically speaking about the two ordinances concerning residency requirements. Ordinance number 5863, this dated January 2000, and ordinance 6021 from June of 2002. I'm aware that one or more of the council members are considering passing the outdated ordinance. To me, this is no different than saying that African-Americans or women can't vote just because it was the law at one time. The new and current laws, just like ordinances, should be the enforced ones, not the outdated ones. Remember, you were elected by the people of Pine Bluff. We are trusting that you will do what is right concerning this issue and all others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Lynette Frazier?
Good evening. To the city council.
Pardon me?
Lynette Frazier. To the city council elected officials and to citizens of Pine Bluff. My name is Lynette R. Frazier, and I worked in the mayor's office for almost five years now. And we agree, we can agree that I have shown nothing but love and respect for each and every last one of you. Whether I may agree with you or not, I have always shown love and respect. My heart is saddened today in regards to all the arguing going on amongst you. I just couldn't sit by and not say something. There are three things I know for sure, and they are that we must respect each other, even in the midst of our different opinions, that we must do everything decent and in order, that we must abide by the laws of the land. It is truly important as the city moves forward that we respect one another when we are sharing our opinion. There are differences of opinion on what transpired with the hiring of the interim chief when the city council was notified, and regarding residency issues. Whatever the issues are, we must give respect. The Lord has blessed us with a new day today, and starting today, we need to do things decent and in order. We know that we as citizens need to abide by the laws of the land. However, what are we to do when we have two conflicting laws? If the laws are conflicting, then the people become conflicted. Just like federal and state laws are amended almost every day as the world progresses into the future, you, the municipality, can consider the option to amend, combine, or delete the ordinances that are conflicting so that there is one clear statement in our law regarding residencies, whether dealing with interim department heads or staff. I understand about taxes and how it's important for our municipality, but I don't understand how out of 400-plus employees, four or five will be detrimental to our city. We have a majority of our own citizens that go to Little Rock and other areas to spend their checks instead of spending it here in Pine Bluff. That's the real battle we need to be fighting to correct. I plead with you today to get past the bickering and the emotions, and let's tackle the real issue at hand, and that is the livelihood of those already employed by the city and creating one ordinance that will govern all residency requirements regardless of what department you're in or what title you hold. Thank you for listening, and God bless.
The Pine Bluff City Council meeting of January the 22nd, 2013 is hereby called to order at this time. We'll do roll call, please.
I'm in Brown.
Here.
I'm in Easterly.
Here.
I'm in South.
Yeah.
I'm in Walker.
I'm in Boyd.
Yeah.
I'm in Brown.
Here.
I'm in May.
Here.
I'm in Ho.
Here.
Thank you. Each of you have a copy of.
So moved.
Thank you. Each of you have a copy of the minutes from the January the 4th, 2013, special minutes.
So moved.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a copy of the minutes from January the 7th, 2013.
You just so moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. If we will, we'll go into our committee reports, ordinances, and resolutions. Alderman Brummet?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance and Resolutions Committee met prior to the meeting. The items on the agenda, number one is being referred to the Traffic Operations Committee for determination on their recommendation. Numbers two, three, four, and five will be read for the third and final reading. Number six will be up for the first reading. We have an additional ordinance that you all have a copy of. Number, we're going to call it number 6A. It is an ordinance authorizing a short-term financing agreement to acquire three vehicles for city departments. This requires unanimous consent to be added to the agenda. I move we add this ordinance to the agenda.
It's been properly moved and second to add number 6A to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
I'm in Brown.
Aye.
I'm in Easterly.
Aye.
I'm in South.
Aye.
I'm in Walker.
Aye.
I'm in Boyd.
Aye.
I'm in Brown.
Aye.
I'm in May.
Aye.
I'm in Ho.
Aye.
It will be number 6A. We also have resolutions number eight, nine, and 10. Number seven will be pulled and revisited by the sponsor to change some wording in it. And that concludes ordinance and resolutions report.
Thank you, Alderman Brummet. Ways and Means?
Yes, ma'am. We have three budget adjustments that are in your packet. The first one is an additional $3,319 in election expenses that are attributed to the city for the November general election and runoff. We're asking that the finance department evaluate the proper disbursement of these funds and where they can be allocated from. But I'd like to move that we accept this budget adjustment of $3,319 to pay the additional election expense. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second that we accept the budget adjustment of $3,319 coming from undesignated funds. Any discussion? Questions? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We have another one. It's retirement from the fire department for an accumulation of 1,080 hours of accumulated sick leave. The total amount is $23,253.21, and this is coming from within the department. Provisions were made in their salaries budget to be able to take care of these needs that the department would have from time to time. So I move we accept this budget adjustment from the fire department. Second.
Okay, the budget adjustment for $23,253.21 has been moved and properly second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And the last one is from the police department. It involves the retirement of two employees for accumulated sick leave. One employee is $11,007.84. The other one is $8,604. The total is $19,611.84. And again, this is coming from within the departments, a budget for salaries, and I move we accept this budget adjustment. Second.
Properly moved and second that we accept this budget adjustment from the police department. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. No opposed?
Mayor, I move that the bills that the city owes be paid. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the bills of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, be paid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Economic and Development, Alderwoman Walker.
Mayor Hollingsworth, I did not have a meeting, but I would like to recognize Reverend Jesse Turner, if he was here. Reverend Jesse Turner has received the recognition and appreciation for commitment to strengthening nation and making a difference in volunteer service, and it's the 2003 Drum Major for Service Award. This is a copy. And also, I have a letter to read. It says, "Congratulations on receiving the MLK Drum Major for Service Award, and thank you for helping to address the most pressing need in your community and our country. In my inaugural address, I stated we need a new era of responsibility, a recognition on the part of area Americans that we have duties to ourselves, our nation, and the world. These are duties that we do not grudgingly accept, but rather seize gladly, firm in the knowledge that there is nothing so satisfying to the spirit than giving all to a difficult task. Your volunteer service demonstrates this kind of commitment to the community that moves America to a step closer to a great promise. Our nation faces the most challenging economic crisis in a lifetime. We will only renew America if we all work together, individual, private sector, and the government must combine effort to make real and lasting changes so that each person have the opportunity to fulfill his or her potential. While government can open some opportunities for us to serve our community, it is up to each of us to seize these opportunities. Thank you for your devotion to service and for doing all you can to shape a better tomorrow and a greater nation." This is from President Barack Obama.
2013. 2003, too. He been there a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Thank you, Alderwoman Walker. Public Health and Welfare, Alderperson Holcomb.
No report.
No report, okay. Public Works, Alderman Mays.
As Chairman of Public Works, I would like to encourage the citizens, if they have potholes on their streets or need their ditches cleaned out, call the street department, 541-5101. And if you would, help us maintain and take care of our parks as a city, working together in 2013. Thank you. It's our street department for potholes. Clean your ditches out before the spring and the rain come.
Thank you, Alderman Mays. Development and Planning, Alderman Boyd.
Mayor, we met on January 15th concerning item number one, but I see it's been forwarded to another committee. We had decided to present it to the full council without other committee. We decided on no pass on it. I don't know which committee is going to now. Traffic, I guess you say.
I believe we said traffic and traffic operations. Is that right, Alderman Brummet?
Traffic operations, that's committee made up of the person, regional planning, the street department, the police department. It's not our committee. It's actually a committee, something that involves the overall community, needs to be approved through that committee.
But I know. Yes, sir. Yeah. Well, Alderman Brummet suggested, you know, that way. I understand that, but some citizens in the fourth ward asked me to look into it, and what I'm doing is just amending the ordinance. I'm not creating another law. I'm amending to the one we got, which will allow us to get 20 signatures from that neighborhood. I mean, the speed breaker, they don't have to be, you know, a foot high. They can be, give them an inch. I'm just picking on half of the citizens in the fourth ward that asked me to do this in the Oxford area, in the University of Clark area, and in the Dalloway, the Fairgrounds area in Dalloway. And once again, the citizens asked for this, and that's what I'm doing.
Okay, and I think by taking it to that committee, that's the final one, isn't it, Alderman Brummet? Yes. Okay. All right.
That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Brown.
No report in here.
All right. Administration, Alderman Steps.
Yes, ma'am. We met on Friday. We had a lengthy discussion concerning the two ordinance and whether or not they were in conflict with one another. And the information that we received from the legal department, from the city attorney, those were not conflicting ordinances. They stood alone, and therefore, I thought that resolved the issue and the conflict that was in question. Also, I have a sponsored resolution directing that the city directors, including the Chief of Police, immediately comply with the city residence requirements for department heads. That's the end of my report, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety, Alderman Easterly.
We don't have a report, Mayor, but we'll have a meeting at 4:00 on February 4th, I believe it is, the next council meeting for the public safety, like we've been having in different boards from the Pine Bluff Police and Fire Departments and District Court, too, and the Department of Patrol.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions.
Mayor, we have an ordinance adopting revised policies for the policy procedures and guidelines manual for the Pine Bluff Fire Department up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance adopting revised policies for the policy procedures and guidelines manual for the Pine Bluff Fire Department.
Move for adoption. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the ordinance adopting the revised policies for the policy procedures and guideline manual for the Pine Bluff Fire Department for vote. Any discussions on this? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, vote carries, eight to zero.
Mayor, we have an ordinance adopting a revision to section 105.03 of the Policy Procedures and Guidelines Manual for the Pine Bluff Fire Department up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance adopting a revision to section 105.03 of the Policy Procedures and Guidelines Manual for the Pine Bluff Fire Department.
Move for adoption. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the ordinance adopting a revision to the Policy and Procedures Guidelines Manual for the Pine Bluff Fire Department. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion? Can I hear a vote? All the ayes? Favor of?
Aye.
Noses? Carries, eight to zero.
Mayor, we have an ordinance adopting a revision to the preface of the Policy Procedures and Guidelines Manual for the Pine Bluff Fire Department up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance adopting a revision to the preface of the Policy Procedures and Guidelines Manual for the Pine Bluff Fire Department.
Move for adoption. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the revision to the preface of the Policy Procedures and Guidelines Manual for the Fire Department. Come up, any discussion? Hearing no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eight to zero.
Mayor, we have an ordinance adopting the 2012 edition of the International Existing Building Code up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance adopting the 2012 edition of the International Existing Building Code.
Move for adoption. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second that the ordinance adopting the 2012 edition of the International Existing Building Code. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries eight to zero.
Just so the public will know, all of this has been through committee and have extensively been discussed in the past, and have been read now three different times at the council meetings. So I guess we're all out of discussion. The next one we have is an ordinance amending Article 6, Page 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paimbluff, Arkansas, to strengthen the city's rules concerning purchase by scrap metal dealers and recyclers, up for the first reading.
Whereas the prevalence of theft of copper and other metals for sale as scrap and recycling is a significant problem in the city, and whereas the council desires to strengthen the city's rules and regulations pertaining to the operation and reporting requirements of scrap or junk dealers or and recyclers in the city to help combat the theft plague, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Paimbluff, Arkansas, Section 1, Section 13-202D of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paimbluff, Arkansas, is amended to insert the following as new, a new paragraph. Provide, provided, excuse me, provide in electronic format to the Paimbluff Police Department on the first day of each month, the record of all purchases made of nefarious metal and scrap metal, as these terms are defined in Section 13-201 of this article. The other paragraphs of Section 13-202D are unchanged and shall be renumbered as 2 through 4. Section 2, Section 2, Section 13-206 of the city code is amended to provide as follows: Penalties. A, any person who fails to comply with the provisions of this ordinance is guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction, subject to a fine of not less than $500 or dollars, nor more than $1,000 for a first offense, or to a term of incarceration in the Jefferson County Detention Center for not less than 10 days, or no more than 30 days, or both fine and incarceration as provided. A person convicted of a second or subsequent offense for violation of this ordinance shall be fined a sum of $1,000, or sentenced to a term of, in the Jefferson County Detention Center, not less than 30 days, nor or more than 180 days, or both fine and incarceration within the parameters specified. B, any person who knowingly gives false information with respect to the matters required to be maintained in the records required under this chapter is guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction, fined not less than $500, nor more than $1,000, or to a term of incarceration in the Jefferson County Detention Center of not more than, not less than 10 days, nor more than 30 days, or both fine and incarceration as provided. C, each day that records are not kept as required by this article shall constitute a separate offense. D, the police department shall promptly refer to the Jefferson County Prosecuting Attorney for felony prosecution of a violation of the provisions of this ordinance where reasonable cause exists to belief that, believe that the conduct constitutes a felony as defined under Arkansas law. Section 3, all ordinances or any part thereof in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 4, the provisions of this ordinance are declared to be severable, and if finding by a court that any part or provisions hereof is invalid, shall not affect the validity and enforcement of the other provisions absent the valid, invalid parts. Section 5, this ordinance shall go into effect on the 31st day after its passage.
Has it been in committee? What committee should it be assigned to? Will this Public Health and Welfare Committee be brought back? For the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, next we have is a resolution appointing Wynn Trafford to the Advertising and Promotion Commission of the City of Paimbluff.
Mr. 6A?
6A.
I forgot, 6A. We have a new one. An ordinance authorizing a short-term financing agreement to require three vehicles for city departments. This will be read all three times tonight.
Whereas the maintenance, animal control, and inspection and zoning departments are in need of new vehicles, and whereas the vehicles will be required via competitive bidding, but the anticipated cost to acquire three vehicles, one for each of the aforementioned departments, is $78,597. And whereas the council desires to utilize a short-term financing obligation as a means of payment for the vehicles pursuant to Amendment 78 of the Arkansas Constitution and Arkansas Code annotated Sections 1478.101. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Paimbluff, Arkansas, Section 1, pursuant to the authority granted the city under Amendment 78 to the Arkansas Constitution and its implementing statutes, ACA Sections 1478.101 et cetera. The mayor is authorized to execute a lease/purchase agreements with the lowest, most responsible bidder to provide financing for the acquisition of a truck for the maintenance department, a truck for the animal control department, and a compact car for inspection and zoning. Section 2, the lease terms and provisions shall be consistent with the winning bid proposal as well as other provisions which are standard in transactions of this nature. The mayor may sign such documents as necessary to complete the transaction, and the city clerk is authorized to attest the mayor's signature as needed. Section 3, this short-term financing obligation is issued under the authority of Amendment 78 to the Arkansas Constitution and Sections 1478.101 et cetera of the Arkansas Code, and is to finance the acquisition of tangible property with a useful life in excess of one year. The lease/purchase agreement and other documents shall contain a referencing, a reference citing the above. Section 4, this ordinance is not general or permanent in nature, and therefore shall take effect upon its passage as provided in ACA Section 1455-205B2.
Move to spin the rules and place the ordinance on the second reading.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, was it second? Okay, we have a motion, and it's been second on the ordinance of authorizing a short-term financing agreement to acquire three vehicles for the city departments. Any discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay.
I'm the Rammatt.
Aye.
I'm the Easterly.
Aye.
I'm the Stephs.
Aye.
I'm the Walker.
Aye.
I'm the Boyd.
Aye.
I'm the Brown.
Aye.
I'm the Mays.
Aye.
I'm the Ho.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing a short-term financing agreement to acquire three vehicles for the city departments.
Move to further spin the rules and place it on the third and final reading. Second.
Okay. Roll call.
I'm the Rammatt.
Aye.
I'm the Easterly.
Aye.
I'm the Stephs.
Aye.
I'm the Walker.
Aye.
I'm the Boyd.
Aye.
I'm the Brown.
Aye.
I'm the Mays.
Aye.
I'm the Ho.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing a short-term financing agreement to acquire three vehicles for city departments.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, that we vote on the ordinance authorizing a short-term financing agreement to acquire three vehicles for the city department. Any discussion? Comments?
Yes.
Okay. Alderwoman Walker.
It will redeploy it in the city, possibly in the cemetery, a real low use. The truck doesn't have air conditioning. It's been in service, I know, over 10 years, so it'll be a very limited use. I don't know specifically where, but I suspect it's in an operational library cemetery.
It's three vehicles. There's some cars.
Did you have any other?
I'm saying, he just bought him a truck.
Right there. That's correct. A truck for maintenance, an animal control truck, and then a car for inspection and zoning.
So, do they already have cars now?
They do, but, you know, they're behind on the replacement. Each of these departments is at least a year, not two years off their replacement schedule. So, you know, they do need to replace a vehicle this year.
You don't know the age of it right now?
You know, I don't have that on hand specifically. We did look at this last year, and it was approved to go ahead and purchase the vehicles. And it's been determined that this would, using a short-term financing arrangement, be the most advantageous way for the city to make the purchase.
This was approved in November or December?
December.
December, okay.
We just want to know when the whole vehicle's going to be.
Okay, I can find that out for you, Alderman.
Okay, any more discussion? Not hearing any more? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Okay, we have a resolution appointing Mr. Wynn Trafford to the Advertising and Promotion Commission of the City of Paimbluff, Arkansas.
Whereas Steve Lux has resigned as a member of the Advertising and Promotion Commission of the City of Paimbluff, and whereas the commission has nominated Wynn Trafford to appeal at the unexpired term of Mr. Lux, subject to council approval, and whereas Mr. Trafford meets the qualifications to serve on the commission, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Paimbluff, Arkansas, that the appointment of Wynn Trafford to the Advertising and Promotion Commission of the City of Paimbluff for a term to expire June 30, 2015, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption.
It's been properly moved. And second, that the resolution appointing Wynn Trafford to the Advertising and Promotion Commission of the City of Paimbluff, do we have any discussion?
Just so everybody will know, these appointments actually come from the commission. They do a search and then bring these forward as recommendations to the council.
That's a real good idea. You just need to know when these things come up, so we get prepared. They just show up with a name and be on the list.
The commission has been working on this for months. It's up to the commission. It's up to the commission, though.
They bring the names or six to the days or something, so we'll know what's going to be. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any more? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I believe Wynn Trafford is in the back. Would you like to stand, please? Thank you, thank you very much. Okay.
Okay, we have a resolution directing the city directors, including the Chief of Police, immediately comply with city residency requirements for department heads.
Whereas ordinance number 5863 passed on January 18th, 2000, codified as Section 2-123 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paimbluff, Arkansas, specifically requires that the directors of city departments, including the chiefs of police and fire department, reside in the city limits. And whereas there are a number of directors of city departments, including the interim chief of police, who are not in compliance with the provisions of ordinance number 5863, and who are not otherwise exempted from its application. And whereas the requirement of city residency for directors of the city department should be enforced, and the directors not in compliance should immediately establish residency in the city or face the consequences as provided in ordinance number 5863. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Paimbluff, Arkansas, every city director, including the interim chief of police, who is not exempt from the provisions of ordinance number 5863, shall immediately establish residency within the city of Paimbluff. A director who does not establish residency must be exempt from the requirement. Continued residency in the city during the director's term of service is considered a condition of employment in favor to do social constitutes, constitute grounds for termination.
Move for adoption. Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved. And second, that the resolution directing the city directors, including the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, immediately comply with the city residency requirements. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
This is a delicate situation. In the beginning, communication was not good. I'm not here to place the blame on anybody. But according to our city attorney, that the law was violated during the reader's administration and during this Hollinsworth administration. You can't fire one without firing everybody else. I'm trying to have an open mind here, but it looks like we're playing tug-of-war with each other. And I didn't sign up to be the all-in-one fight. I signed up to make Paimbluff better. As long as we keep playing this game, we ain't gonna be running in circles every four years. According to the city attorney, both administrations have done wrong. Now, how do you fix this problem? Do you pass this resolution? Go after one person, and other people lose their jobs? Or do you bring this one person in because you knew that this other administration done wrong, so that this person can get this position? Two wrongs don't make it right. And I'm not saying this was done intentionally, but nobody's going to win in this situation if this is not handled correctly. That's all I want to say.
One of the things that I would like to kind of clear up with this is that, and I agree with you, Alderman Holcomb, two wrongs don't make a right. The ordinance that's dated in 2000, the year 2000, 5863, that ordinance has been used in various capacities to hire different people within different divisions, knowingly that the department heads, or whomever, did not live in the city limits. And I would like to, at this point, ask our city attorney to correct me if I'm wrong, but whenever you establish a practice for a certain period of time, does that not, is that not considered a policy after a period of time?
No, ma'am, not.
It's not, okay. So with this particular violation of this ordinance or violating the law, is that considered going against, it's called practices and customs, where we would be very, very liable for that as a city, even though we didn't create it? I didn't. The past administration and council created it.
As it relates to customs and practices, the city does not want to establish a pattern of not following the law. So we would not want to continue down this path. And as I stated in my memorandum of legal opinion, as it relates to this, I offered a number of solutions as it relates to this.
Right.
You can either repeal ordinance 2-123, you can make an amendment to exempt the interim chief, you can either, you can just enforce it as it is. I mean, but it's up to the council to determine.
Right. But one of the things that we need to understand is that if you uphold the older law, then there will be four people that will lose their jobs immediately. And it is an old law, and a law in which needs to be amended or repealed. Now, according to the law in which, the newer law, the law 2002, that is a law in which two people have been hired on. John Howe, which was hired by the Civil Service Commission, but at that same time, he was hired under that law, 2002. That's a fact. The second fact is Collier Hill, which was an interim police chief, was hired under that law, and Collier Hill did not establish residency here. So we have two conflicting laws in which we need to do something about. It's no different than our state legislators or our, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I've got the floor.
And I'm not talking out loud either.
So what I'm saying here is, is this law, it's no different than our state government, the governing body, or our federal government, amending and changing laws to bring them up to date. So that's what I'm saying. I believe that we, as a city, and the city government, the council, we need to address this problem, and we need to bring it up to date, because commuting in this day and time is a normal way of life. And I do not want us to lock us in as a city, to lock us into where we're not able to bring in the most qualified person. And I think that that's huge. But most especially, I don't want us to have to terminate three to four people because of this old law as well. So I think that we also need to understand that the custom or the policy, practices and customs, is going to be huge if we do not listen to what our attorney said, because there has there has been a practice established here, and it's been on for five to six years now, or longer. Anybody else? Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I have something. You know, the way I see this is, my take is this, I wish we'd spent more positive time trying our best as a council to bring in jobs for our citizens. We spent over a month on this already. We headed to, going on some valuable time. I'm like Alderman Hulcom, I didn't come up here just to, just to keep the vision. I came to help divide, you know, to put the city together, and to keep it together for the betterment of our citizens. Now, the way I see this important issue is this, combine, this is my opinion, combine both ordinances into one, rename it to fit all the employees who work outside the city limits of Pine Bluff as of today. Leave the department heads as they are, uniform, non-uniform. Draw a line, once again, as of today, no one else will be hired outside, in Pine Bluff, from outside of the city limits, and who will take payroll, taxes, and revenue outside the city. A new hire will be required to be a registered voter in Pine Bluff, and must have a house, a residency, or apartment with a Pine Bluff zip code 716010203. All department heads, all employees, no matter of the department, once again, uniform or non-uniform, including the interim employees, shall live in the city of Pine Bluff also. As of today, I mean, we're gonna disrupt a lot of people if we go this route, and actually, Chief Howe is still the interim. I mean, now the one, the person that comes in will be required for the next police chief, because it's basically aiming at the police chief. Let's just call it like it is. I'm here representing the people, and that's what I'm doing. So that's my take on this. Combine them as one, amend it, we have the power, the council is the most powerful position in Pine Bluff, if we use it right, to help our citizens. And what we're doing now is really wasting a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just got one question.
Yes, sir.
You talked about customs. What has been the customary way that the police department has handled when a chief has been needed, retired, and Barbara Brown, that who will leave his position? Is that what we're talking about, when we're talking about customs?
No, sir. We're talking about the hiring practices of department heads and chiefs.
You said customs, you brought the word customs.
Practices and customs is the, right.
Customarily, what has happened in this police department when a chief of police leaves? And I just started naming down the line. When Barbara Brown left, somebody knew who took his place. Who took his place? When Joe Thomas left? Remember, we talked about customs, and what's customary has happened. So now, when you brought that in, that's why I asked you a question. If that what you meant to, let's talk about, what would've been the customers, and what's been the practice of the police department since when they leave? Who customarily comes in and take over? And that's my question, and I'm not trying to put down, I'm not getting at nobody, but if we're gonna talk about practices and customs, that's just one question I have.
Well, I could answer that very easily. The past administration, whenever they hired an interim chief of police, they went outside the city limits to Phoenix, Arizona, to get that one. So, you know, it's, I think what we're needing here is a definition of customs, but the point is, is that that is the law. We have established a practice and custom here since 2007. We have broken our own laws since 2007, and maybe a little before that. We've broken our own city laws by the different people that the past administrations have hired. And that's what we're saying today is, we need to stop that part of it. We need, we recognize it now, and we need to stop it. We need to make a change, we need to amend, repeal, whatever it may be, but we need to do that. We need to bring the two together, because there has been a practice applied to both ordinances. And so that's what we need to do as a governing body. Yes, sir.
The, customarily, in the last three or four chiefs that's left, we've had interim chiefs. It wasn't assistant chiefs.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Hollywood, when Collier Hill was starting, in the others, we did not have assistant chiefs. We had four interim chiefs. That's the difference. We were interim.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is that Alderman Brown?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Very good. I keep hearing the words Collier Hill as an example for you. And if I understand that Collier Hill was from Arizona, he's a prior, or a previous Pine Bluff resident, but he had moved out in Arizona. And it is my understanding that it's very hard for a man to service interim in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and drive home to Arizona every day. So he had to have some kind of, he had to have some kind of residence here during the time. When he came here, he said, "I'm not here for the permanent job." He was hired as an interim, and he had permanent residence at that time. He couldn't just, "I'm finna go to Arizona, I'm leaving here tonight, I'm going to Arizona, I'll be back in the morning." So he had permanent residence in Jefferson County. And of course, I cannot believe that the people in this audience, and anybody else that would have us to break the law. They tell us that ignorance of the law is no excuse. I cannot believe that we want to sit here in this room and think that we should break the law because somebody else broke the law.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No.
That's clearly, I mean, we're trying to make it be right to break the law because somebody else did it? We all ought to be locked up, except for what we want to do. We should all be locked up.
Okay. Yes, sir. I will say that the definition of residency requirement, if I'm correct on this, is that your voter's registration has to be moved along with your, receiving your mail. So that's part of establishing a residency.
Collier Hill finances and drives a vehicle back and forth to Arizona.
I'm not sure what that was, but I do know that he did not move his voter's registration nor his mail to here, and that's two of the requirements that's necessary. So any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to just say, I think when it comes to emergency personnel, police chief, fire chief, that they ought to live within the city, but others may vary, or may differ. And I just wanted to say, you know, it could bring hardship on some, just in case disorderly we got out here due pass, I just see one issue in it that stands out to me immediately, you know, termination or whatever. I think if it do pass, we should come back and have something in place for these people to have at least six months or so, make a decision, or make a move, or whatever, if it come down to that.
Okay.
That'll get them the opportunity to decide whether they want to move into the city or seek employment elsewhere, and they know they won't have to do it tomorrow or next week.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Alderman Brummett?
Mayor, we've, it's kind of like beating a dead horse almost to death. We've talked about this for, spent several weeks, lots of meetings, executive sessions, and so on. And as I said at the administration committee the other day, I really believe that we ought to rescind or take away ordinance number 5863 about the residency requirement. I think it's the only solution to the problem. I said that in the administration committee, because I was on the council when the previous administration hired three different people that I can think of right off the bat. And I could, I actually said something to the mayor at that time, but I was convinced, as I think most of us were, that he was hiring the best people that were available. They didn't live in the city, but he hired what I felt like, and I agreed with him, were the best candidates that he had at the time. And it's kind of, it looks, it doesn't look, something just, it doesn't look right for us to jump on this now, when we didn't back then. So that's the real issue that I have, and I think customs and practices, and everybody's got opinions, and that's fine, but I just really think that the practices and customs have already been set, that I hope that, my suggestion has been from the beginning, to rescind ordinance number 5863 involving residency, and let's move on, and allow the administration the opportunity to hire the best people for whatever job comes up in the future with our city. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Steppes?
Thank you, Mayor Hollywood. It wouldn't be so bad if you hadn't advised her and was on her committee. And here's my point. You knew this. And you have served on this council longer than any of us. You knew that ordinance was out there. Alderman Hollywood, Mayor Hollywood didn't know, but you advised her, and you knew it was wrong before, and you knew what the practices had been. When were you gonna say, "When will we stop and get it right?" And see, that question is gonna loom out there, because you sitting up there on her advisory committee. I'm not trying to put you down for that.
Okay.
But what I'm saying, I understood that you served as an advisor to her in the appointment of the interim chief.
No, sir. No, sir, that is not correct.
Well...
At all. That is not correct. What?
I got that from you, mayor. Now, if I'm wrong, and I apologize for it, but I got that information from you.
We had a...
There were four people that served on that advisory committee to you, and Alderman Brummett was one of them.
We had a review committee, in which the review committee, we went over a couple of resumes, and with the review committee, we had a scoring or a rating as to how we rated each applicant, or each person that was doing the interview, and that was quite similar to how we did it with the Civil Service Commission. Each person submitted a score after each interview, and from that score, we had someone to tabulate that, not me, and hand me the score. So no particular person recommended or gave me any indication as to what I should or should not do. It was an accumulated score of five people that served on this review committee.
My question is, was he one of them?
Yes, sir, he was one of them.
I was also one of them whenever the, when Mayor Rita selected the last police chief. I was on the committee that advised him, that gave him scores on those people. And so I, as a senior member and a member of the Public Safety Committee, it just seemed like a natural place to go would be somebody that's had experience with what's been going on and so on, and I appreciated the opportunity and to be involved in it.
That's like with the transition committee, that we had Alder, Alderman Hulcom, I mean, Brummett served on it, and then also did Alderwoman Hulcom. We had outgoing senior council member and incoming senior council member to help with the transition, so that we'd have a good flow to it, and have the information that we needed. So it was a good balance. To say that Alderman Brummett was up to speed with the ordinances, we certainly thought that we were, by what was showing on the website and the different places that we went to. And I think that's part of the problems that we've got within the city. We have many older ordinances that might need to be reviewed, and I'm not saying that any one person here is wrong. What I'm saying is, is that we have two conflicting ordinances regarding residency requirements that need to be changed.
Could I ask you one question, if you don't mind? Did I also offer my support and suggestion to you concerning those ordinances? I told you, and I told you at the time, I said, "I'm not trying to usurp your authority." I said, "But you got these conflicts, you got them out there." I said, "And there's a problem with trying to hire an interim chief that doesn't live here in the city." Now, I shared that information with you, because now, you can accept it, and you did exactly what you wanted to do, you could accept it or you could leave it, but I wanted to put it out there, so at least you would have that information, in the event that somebody didn't tell you. But I wanted to tell you, because I'm not against you on this council. You were elected by the people, and we were all elected, and as I shared with you before, there'll be not a time that I'll ever disrespect you, in no shape, form, or fashion. But I think that we got to communicate, and I was trying to communicate with you, because I knew that where we are now is where we were gonna get to, when we didn't have the proper communication, and I didn't want you to get here and to have named somebody, and we'd be here like we are right now. And that's the reason that I shared that information with you. Now it looks as though that we are here, and we're trying to cause confusion in this city. That's not the case. And we might as well admit it, this is not the case. You might look at some of us and say, "Well, you sponsored this, you sponsored that," but we got to tell the truth. That's what's gonna, that's what's gonna get us back where we need to be. We got to be honest and truthful with one another, and that's the thing that confuses me. That's one of the reasons I sponsored this, because there's no conflict between these ordinances, according to the legal council. There's no conflict.
The conflict, I believe, comes from the fact that from past administration, that we do have at present three department heads that have been hired against the old ordinance. They have been hired, and they are right now serving as a head department, head of a department, that is against our own law. That is a fact. Okay? That is, that is a fact. The second fact is, we have a law on the books that states that the, anyone that is a uniformed police officer, the residency requirement is within the state of Arkansas. Those are two laws. And the one law in which is the latter one, was used to hire two people. So, yes, we've got some problems here, we need to address the problems, and that's where we are right now. We need to address the old law, because right now, right now, the city is liable for practices and customs, because we've, the city has allowed it to go on. And that's just, it's got to be fixed.
So what do you think's gonna happen? That you, you said, "Practice and customs"?
Yes, sir.
What do you think's gonna happen if we continue, if we do what we're doing? I want to hear that.
Well, I won't, as far as I'm concerned, I will not be a party to it, because I know that we're breaking the law.
Let me just say this, I understand that you're saying that the people that are going to be affected, and that's what you constantly keep saying, and I just want to say Brenda Davis-Jones was affected, possibly four other deputy chiefs are going to be affected, because they want the better of their lives for their families. So you have affected those people in your hire.
I didn't hire them.
You're right.
I didn't hire them. I didn't hire them. You did.
Now, what I'm saying is, you're thinking about the ones that are already presently employed. I'm talking about the ones that you affected by your appointment. You're gonna affect those lives also. You've affected Brenda Davis-Jones, she doesn't have a job, and at least four of the other deputies may decide to sue, because they didn't get an opportunity.
Okay. Let's, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I think that the fact that our city attorney has said that the law has been violated is being completely overlooked, and we have a city attorney that was elected by the people the same as we have. And once it's done, you can't change the law to fit, to fix it. It's done. We have to move forward, and as far as the past administration is concerned, he's not And as far as the past administration is concerned, he's not here anymore. And, and probably because of his practice is the reason he's not used. So we can't deal with him.
We can amend the law.
No, but that's not what's on the table.
Well, okay. Let, let's go ahead. Resolution on the table. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and call for a vote? Yes. Roll call.
Alderman Brummett?
Is voting on the resolution?
Voting for.
Alderman Asen?
No.
Alderman Stell?
Yes.
Alderman Walton?
Yes.
Alderman Boyd?
I'll put one more quick question, if, if we talk about giving the people the extended time, if, just.
We're voting on the resolution as it is. The res- yeah.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Hall?
Forty-four? Is that right? Okay. Okay. I vote against it. Okay. Ties for like, okay. Ties for like a, okay.
Okay, let's move on then to number-
But, but before we move on, what happens to this law? What, what happens? We just gonna move on like it's, like it never happened?
We'll have to go back to the drawing board, I guess.
Yeah. Okay.
What happens to it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
What happens to it when it dies?
So, 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 so let me just say this. It no longer exists at, at this point in the, the current law as it is, is, is what's supposed to be, what should be enforced.
So the resolution?
Well, in my opinion, I, I think that the, uh, the resident, residency requirement is, is the valid law that supersedes the other law. So that's what should be enforced.
Which, which one?
Two dash one twenty-three.
Okay.
So, so one more, one more comment. So, so everybody's saying that, and this whole thing is about chief police. So then he just said, "Go down and rest us all," right? Now, we violating the law?
No, but, but the law, but the law that's prevailing is six fifty-eight sixty-three, session two, nine, one, two, three. Is that what she said?
That's an opinion.
But did, is that what the attorney said?
That's her opinion.
It's my opinion, and I did consult with the, uh, municipal league lawyer, Mark Hayes, as it relates to this particular issue, and he agreed with my opinion without any reservations. What he said was-
Excuse me, I, I can't hear you.
He, I did consult with our municipal league attorney, Mark Hayes, regarding this issue, and he agreed with my opinion. What he suggested was that either the ordinance be repealed or that there's some amendment made to it. But the opinion that I have given you is the, is a correct opinion. He also indicated that, uh, because the opinion was, as it relates to the language between the two different ordinances, you have one ordinance that's general in nature, you have one that's specific in nature. So the specific nature is, the ordinance that is specific in nature is most, most likely, if you go to court on this issue, that it will prevail. That's where it is.
Thank you.
But how did he speak to practices and customs with, with regards to this?
Same thing as I said previously, as it relates to practices and customs, he indicated that you don't want to, the city does not want to be in a position where it follows, it does not abide by its law.
On law.
That's why the, the law needs to be amended. And he indicated that to me. It needs to be amended so that we don't continue down this path. The only way to amend it is through the council. Otherwise, it's gonna require that the people that are currently existing in, in these positions as director and the interim chief, that they be terminated as stated in the ordinance.
Okay.
And that, and that's what I said in administration committee meeting the other day, that I intend to bring up, uh, new ordinance to amend and put those two together somehow or another.
Okay. Okay. Alderman?
Get together and work on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I just want to say that it's a sad day, that there are some people want to ignore what the city attorney said because it's not what they want to hear. It doesn't matter whether it's what you want to hear or not, it's the law. And she is an elected official.
And I like, I am too. We have-
And an attorney.
We have a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and structures as nuisances and ordering their baking.
Whereas the city council has determined that the structures located on the property-
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a amendment to give.
Yeah, we have a couple of houses.
So you're making a motion to amend?
Motion to amend the staff.
Okay. We're gonna vote on the amendment first. We have a motion to, uh, and properly second, to amend, um, two pieces of property here, is that right?
Yes.
To take them off the list.
No, no. One is to be taken off. Page two is an addition.
Oh. One to be taken off and two, one is an addition. Okay. All right. I'm sorry. Let's hold this discussion down so we can hear up here. Thank you. Okay. We have a, um, an amended motion that has been properly second to add one piece of property, which is, um, the- Oh, it's been off? Okay.
Carbage needed and add one on Hollis Street.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Pose. Okay. Now the resolution?
Move that we accept the resolution as amended.
Okay. Been moved and properly second that we, uh, accept the resolution. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Second? I mean, zero. Passed? Okay. Let's see.
Mayor, that concludes our agenda for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Um, a couple of updates regarding our website that I'm very excited about. First of all, we, we will have a provision on the website that should you want to speak at a city council meeting, you can do so by going through the website to sign up. And I, we're in hopes that that will expedite, expedite or help those that would like to do so without making a phone call. Um, let's see, and I believe that's all the announcements that I have. So, um, this meeting is adjourned. Yes, ma'am?
I have one question. Where are we on our bond project? I know some of us have since been, and where are we?
That's a really good question, and, um, I don't have the information with me, but it's going to be on the website. We will have, uh, each time that we have a task force meeting, we will update, uh, the website as to exactly where it is and, um, with the bonds that have been let out and where the project stands. And it'll also have the monies that has been, um, appropriated for that budget-wise.
Harold, could we get with, uh, Mr. Mayor and have you said he was on the project?
Be more than happy to. You can attend that task force meeting that we, we have weekly, and that'll bring you up to speed too. Anything else?
You didn't say where the, the website is. City, uh, city of-
City of Pine Bluff?
City of Pine Bluff.
Uh-huh. City of Pine Bluff.
And I- I want to encourage all the aldermen to make sure that your constituents are aware of that. They can find a lot of information. I get calls, all, and I know you all do too, about, you know, who's, how do I contact this or that? Well, if they'll go to that website, the information is there. The, your contact information has been all updated, the council committees are all updated on there. They can go there and look up a map for the different wards. There's a ton of information on that site. I just would encourage you to see the people, go there as they're, uh, 'cause we're gonna, as the mayor says, continue to try to develop it and improve it. Get it where we can do, pay bills and do a lot of good things as time goes along.
That is true. Website is only as good as the updates. So we really are working hard to keep it updated so that you will have accurate information, updated information as well. And we, um, also, with the town hall meeting, you can give us some ideas as to the information that you might be looking for, that we're overlooking as well. So we welcome your input, uh, regarding that. Anything else? Okay. Meeting adjourned. We have two speakers tonight. Ms. Mohammed has three minutes, and then after Ms. Mohammed is, um, Jihad Mohammed. Is he here? Jihad Mohammed?
Uh, good evening to the mayor and the city council. What I would like to say is that if we have laws on the books, and especially if they are, the law is specific, then we need to follow that law. We need to do what's right. How can we expect for the young adults out there to do what's right and we continue to do what's wrong? And we need to get rid of our slave mentality that's on both sides.
Okay. Jihad Mohammed?
I got three minutes. I'll be very brief, uh, to the councilmen, to the mayor. Just want to make just a few comments. And I think, uh, some of the councilmen hit the nail right on the head. All this whole issue about regis, residency, all of that comes from injustice. All of that comes from a lack of being fair. All of that comes from non-transparency that came from the people we put in office, Mr. Hollisburg. I want you to understand that. It has nothing to do, I don't think any, I don't think the people have anything personally against Jeff, our interim chief, our travel throughout the city. I don't hear anybody talking negative about him. However, fairness and justice is the thing that we want. And when our mayor is wrong, the council should have the guts to stand up and say, "Look, mayor, on this particular issue, you was wrong." And when you take the job as a supervisor, you come in and the people you have problems with, that you have issues with, you sit there and sit them down and say, "Look, I understand that this person was your supervisor, but I'm your supervisor and this is how I need to do this." That's being fair. But if, if somebody becomes your supervisor tomorrow and they hire you based upon what you did under another supervisor, they fire you. That's wrong. So I want you to understand, we can use all the political jobs that we want to, but I want you to, I want you to understand. Thomas Jefferson made this statement. He said, "I tremble when I reflect that God is just and that his justice cannot sleep forever." So it matters, it matters not about public opinion. Martin Luther King didn't care about public opinion. He was concerned with what was right, and he was willing to speak true to power and get admonition. Those of you all who want to sit around and go along with the foolishness. I want you to understand that you will be up for reelection and we intend to fire you out of office. I want you to understand that. And as far as Mr. Brummett, I understand he's pitching and pulling and all that, but this guy, he runs a Facebook page that attacks black folk. That's the truth. And you go to Pine Bluff Briefing, he runs that page. If somebody says something against him, he pulls them off. That's your alderman right there that's involved in foolishness on these social sites. So I want you to understand that we're watching you. I want you to understand that. And if you do not do the right thing, we're gonna drive you out of office. We're not gonna go for you coming in here shucking and jiving and doing folks wrong, no matter who you is. And it's not a black or white issue. When Chief Hollis was fired, I went and I spoke to the people. I said, "Look, what happened with this man?" I was concerned. And they gave me, the people who were there told me what happened. So it's not about black or white, it's about what's right. And it's not about, as you said, you fired Chief Brenda Davis-Jones because the people told you. As a mayor, you got to think for yourself, mayor. And you got to have a moral consciousness, a God consciousness, like God, like Jesus, to do the right thing regardless of what the people say. The people will lead you wrong. You don't see how they shooting and killing and drinking and smoking and falling down the truck? The people will mislead you. And God will hold you accountable.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for attending tonight.